We come to order, this is a special call meeting, Jackson County Board of Commissioners, May 31st. To approve the agenda, we'd like to add one item, and that would be an item of public comment to precede the only one business item that we have. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
For me.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. But ayes, have it. So the first item is public comment, and I think, if you're handling the paper, we'll go ahead and start and give everybody an opportunity to come forward. And when you come, come up to the microphone and speak into the mic as close as you can so we can hear you. Make sure you state your name for the record so we can get you into the official minutes. And obviously, I think most everyone here wants to speak about the topic on today's agenda, which is the Black Rock Conservation or Expansion of Pinnacle Park, but obviously you had something else here to do that way. But I'll call you up, and then you have about three minutes to speak roughly. I'll sort of hold on up. We'll get down to it at the end of time. If you go over just a little bit, that'd be fine. Let's just try to be respectful of everyone's time, and we'll try to work through this and give everybody a chance to speak. So the first person on the list is Mr. Jake Coward.
Thank you, County Commissioners. My name's Jake Howard, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Pinnacle Park Foundation, which has been in existence since 1992. That foundation has been instrumental in the creation of the Pinnacle Park, and we think that Pinnacle Park today is one of the crown jewels of Jackson County. This particular addition that is being proposed, I think, would really benefit the county, and I've noticed that there are a lot of people here to speak on that. So I'm going to leave some of the other comments I intended to make to those people that are back behind me. I want to address a few pointed comments about some issues that I have discovered in talking with you and the officials about the park. Number one, and I've been talking with Bill Holman, I talked with him this morning, as a matter of fact, and in particular, I was talking with him about the application that is before Clean Water Trust Fund. This application can have commitments by the town and the county that are conditional. In other words, it doesn't have to be just an absolute commitment for a $250,000 grant. It can have attached to it whatever other condition you want to put in it, such as it being available for recreation, it being available for camping, it being available for hunting. Whatever condition you want to put on that is okay as far as the application, but if it goes to that body, those conditions are not going to cause the points to decrease. And Bill Holman was the director of that body for 2001, 2006, so I trust he knows what he's talking about. If you make that application and it's conditioned upon certain things that you insist on, then those conditions will survive. Second thing is, they have not gotten appraisals yet. They know that there are appraisals that are out there, that the landowner has submitted appraisals, and what their opinion about what the appraised value may differ remarkably from what the appraisals that are procured by the Clean Water Trust Fund. But they will definitely do other appraisals to get to the fair market value. My own experience in doing many of these transactions are that there are great variance between the landowner and the body that's seeking to purchase that property, and there's negotiation that will ensue after the grant is awarded, if it is. Third thing that I've identified that concerns you is that who is going to be the conservation steward? That is, who is going to have the legal authority to enforce any kind of regulations that are imposed on this piece of property? And that's going to be Bang Spring. Bang Spring is definitely going to be the body that does that. They will hold conservation easement, just like they do in the Pinnacle Park. They used to be known as the Southern Tennessee Land Trust. So there's a trustworthy body who will be able to enforce any kind of conditions that you impose on it. So those are three things that I've identified that seem to be of concern that I wanted to just put out there too so you know where those stand. And lastly, I just want to say that, you know, as far as the tax value is something that's important, I understand that everybody gets that part. People come to Jackson County and locate and spend money here not because they find roads and houses and buildings. They come here because of wild places. A wild place is important to our park, not only our county that's important to the world, but that forest is the lungs of the earth, and we need to do, whenever we've got the chance to conserve a piece of property, we should do it. And I think you have a chance, and I hope that you listen to what these people have to say later on, and I hope that it's a vote that you choose to be 5-0 in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sue Nations. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here to urge you as commissioners to provide the Conservation Trust with a letter of support for the $250,000. And I think, as Mr. Coward said, with conditions that you think are appropriate is a very reasonable route to take. The Town of Silva has already approved this letter. Being a partner with the Town of Silva in support of this acquisition is critical to acquire this grant and to solicit private donations in order to purchase this land. Not only is it a first step to get them all rolling, but it's an opportunity for our commissioners, our county leaders, to demonstrate that they can work together with other governmental entities in order to take care of the people of Jackson County. And that's a very important thing for me personally right now is to see our leaders work together. If this land is acquired, a management operation is already in place with the Pinnacle Park taking care of that, that management operation, so it's not like taking on another operation without a structure in place. And I don't think I have to tell you how much some local support there is for the Pinnacle Park. The Pinnacle Park is a valuable asset to this county. I frequently come here myself, and I can tell you that this park is very well-used. I see groups with schools there doing the challenge and obstacle course of getting to the Pinnacle, and truly, it is an obstacle course in the community. I see young people there that have organized a group themselves on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon, and what better place for our young people to be than to have that close enough that they can go and take advantage of it? And there are a lot of people like me who use that trail up there to enjoy the wildflowers, the scenery, the beauty of the place up there. And you wouldn't believe how many people from out of Jackson County I have met on that trail. South Carolina, Texas, Georgia. I even met a person from Alaska on that trail, and that's what drew them to Jackson County. That trail is very widely known and respected across not only Jackson County in the state, but across the country. The Pinnacle Park is definitely an economic asset to the county, and adding the plot balsams to the park will increase the benefit to the county. Yes, the Pinnacle Park is a major tourist attraction for Jackson County. And just as the Great Smoky Mountain National Park brings economic advantages and benefits to Jackson County, so does the Pinnacle Park. Adding that piece of property would only increase those benefits to Jackson County. And speaking of the Great Smoky Mountain National Park, do you remember how it was created? In the 1920s, visionary men and women thought the mountains were worthy, were worthy of preservation. And this was at a time when they had been lumbered and barbed, but still thought they were worthy of preservation. The heights of the mountains, the depths of the valleys, the plant and animal life that was there, the rare habitats for those were all factors and considerations in establishing that preservation movement. The plot mountains are just as beautiful as anything in the Smokies. They have the same heights, they have the same depths. There's the same habitats there for the plants and for the animals. And when we look up to those mountains, we need to be able to see mountains. Conservation and preservation of this mountain range would be a gift to the people of Jackson County, a gift to future generations, to our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. A gift of beauty, a gift of place that we can all enjoy, a place that's just set apart. All of those may seem very intangible, but they're not. They are real, and this gift of conservation is the only way we can keep the plot balsams. Think about it. It's not a giveaway, it's a gift that we can give ourselves and give future generations. We identify with place. That's one thing that sets us apart, how we identify with place. We have deep ties and connections to this land and to these mountains, and these mountains are a great part of our identity. The Great Smoky Mountain National Park was created by a group of Farsi and men of vision and civic pride who undertook a project to save a mountain paradise. You, you can do the same thing for us here in Jackson County. Please save the balsam plots for us, write that letter. Thank you.
And thank you. And I'll say, Miss Nations, I didn't know this until this year. If you go down to, I was down at O'Connell Lefty, the visitor center, always have guests, and I'm going to take them. It's called the Blue Park Way, correct? And there's a map on the wall down there that shows the proposed park boundary in 1925, which included the plot balsam. Our boundary would have come all the way to the old 1923 road that went up to Silva across Balsam Gaps. That would have been the boundary, so it would have been one point included.
Well, what's interesting is, that area that went to water up and off was so badly eroded, and they had the money, so they just did not take that area. But think about how it looks today, how it's done.
Betsy Swift.
Thank you for this opportunity. And my name is Betsy Swift. After the first two speakers, I have really only something very simple to add, which is what my mother would say in her simple way, "Don't cook the goose that lays the golden egg." So I'm asking you to vote yes on this Black Rock Expansion of Pinnacle Park. Many people move here or visit our area because of the natural beauty. Expansion of this area will encourage people to continue to spend their vacation time and recreation dollars in Jackson County. And I think also a worthwhile consideration is preserving a beautiful vista for the people who live here. I call that the view shed of a common person. We don't all have a home with a gorgeous front porch looking out on several ranges, but we can, we see that as we ride around town, and it's part of what ties us to our home. And I think, as Mr. Coward said, probably the most important thing is that the forest is the lungs of the earth, and we should conserve that whenever we have the opportunity to do so. This land in private hands, yes, it's in the tax base, but use could be restricted in the future, or the land could be developed, which I believe would be a great loss to everyone in this county and to our visitors. I believe there are other ways to improve the tax base, such as making policy that supports small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is George Rector, and I'm here this morning to encourage you to support the purchase of the 441 and a half acre Black Rock Track for the expansion of Pinnacle Park. I was born and raised in Andrews, and I've been a resident of Jackson County for the last 35 years. And although I'm not yet prepared to refer to myself as an old-timer, I can honestly say that I've lived in this region long enough to witness significant changes to its character. More people, more houses, busier roads and highways, and far less rural dealing. North Carolina is now ranked as the 10th most populous state in the nation, and projections for population growth only indicate that our numbers will continue to grow in coming years. Whether future residents are born here, whether they relocate here to cause of work, or whether they fulfill a longstanding dream to retire here, these future residents will still need and deserve the same opportunities and services that those of us living here today now enjoy. This includes access to public lands for recreation, as well as to appreciate the irreplaceable beauty of the county. And as others have mentioned, Pinnacle Park has now become an important part of our local economy. The Silva Commissioners understand the significance of this moment and have pledged $250,000 to support this project. As Bill Holman, the Director of the Conservation Fund, has stated, the success of acquiring the Black Rock Track is much more likely to succeed if the Jackson County Board of Commissioners also offers its support. Without your pledge of $250,000, it will become much more difficult to secure the necessary grant funding from the Clean Water Management Trust Fund, and that money is essential for this project's success. This moment represents a rare opportunity for you to invest in the future of Jackson County. In fact, for the future of Pinnacle Park, there will be no better time to do so. I ask you to do what is right, support this project. Conservation typically does not happen by accident. Instead, it requires a determined and sustained effort, and I urge you to fully join that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Staff. My name is Hannah LaProuse. I'm a resident of Jackson County, and as such, I take full to name the recreational opportunities offered by a rec center and our beautiful outdoors. In fact, even in the soggy outdoors, it's why I'm a resident here. In my working years, in addition to serving children, I practiced environmental law and had the opportunity to review and evaluate massive portfolios of property acquisitions for investment groups and government entities. When that happened, some of the properties were clearly risked and rejected, some of them were obviously good deals, good investments, and there were many that landed in the gray area, maybe yes, maybe no. For a lawyer, those were properties that took further investigation, audits of varying degrees, but most important, the time ticking away deadlines, some creative, but not unusual agreements to look by some time or some kind of a contingency. And going forward, the goal in those transactions was to keep the door open, so a client could not miss out on something that would give them a worthwhile, sometimes long-term jab at the deal. You don't want a big deal to slip away. It also kept them out of doing something that maybe gave them unwanted liabilities. So my message to you is to look at the options for this. Use the talent of your staffers and keep the opportunity and contingencies open for us to increase our recreational opportunities, not to mention our water resources. Jackson County relies on you to capitalize on opportunities for employees.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Hamilton. I sit on the town board, but I want you to know I'm here as a citizen of the county and the town. This is my opinion. Joe and I have been here a long time. I was fortunate enough to marry a local, and we've raised our family here. We've been extremely proud to be residents of Jackson County. But I see our land slipping away and gated communities going up everywhere, and I see this as an opportunity that we cannot resist. The town has made their pledge. I just hope we can all keep an open mind, and I wish we could work together. I don't like partisan politics, and I'm not saying that's what's happening, but I wish that we could come together as boards and think of all the people and everything that they might want to enjoy these beautiful mountains. And I'm out in town a lot, and I meet a lot of the tourists, and they think we live in the most beautiful place there is, and I agree. And I want everybody to have this opportunity, and I think if it's a one-time opportunity and if it slips away, shame on us, because I don't want to look up there and see condominiums or no telling what on that ridge, because I'm one of the few maybe that I can't stand to see any home on the ridge. They don't belong there. So please, really think about this seriously, because it may not benefit us, but I look for future generations that this is going to preserve land and opportunity and recreation for so many people, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
My name's Burke Cordege. I'm here today to encourage the board to approve the application or go with the application and approve the monies for purchasing this land in question and adding it to the Pinnacle Park and part of a larger tract of land up there in the plot balsams that's being preserved. I know there are reasons for doing this. I've read and talked about people, with people about reasons for not doing it. I'm just going to discuss one today. It's not really a hobby I'm good at or like to discuss in public, but it's concerning the finances of the area. It's been said by the board that the acquisition of this land pushing for the application will take the land out of the tax base, and that's true. I just want to point out that that doesn't necessarily mean that the land then as part of Pinnacle Park becomes a financial zero or even a financial negative for the county. Just to give an example, in 1989, a much larger and probably more developed piece of land, much larger, was taken out of the tax base when Panther Town Valley passed from private hands into the Nantahala National Forest. Panther Town Valley contributes to the finances and the economy of this county. It is not a zero. Personally, I used to make my, I'm retired now, but I used to make my living as an outfittering guide for 30 years here in the county. I ran trips in Panther Town. I started going there in 1989, right after it opened to the public, and over the course of 25 years or so, there's probably nobody who's camped in Panther Town more than I have. I spent two or 300 nights there, probably, camping. I've taken hundreds of people to Panther Town. Thousands of people go to Panther Town. All of those people that came on my trips, these are multi-day trips, all of them came, they're probably clients of my state at every motel that's in this county. Over time, they ate at every restaurant in this county, they bought the gas in this county, they would go to various stores in this county. And after the trip was over, many of these people would come back on their own for other trips with me or come back on their own. So this, it's hard to figure this sort of thing, but Panther Town is not a financial drain, I would say. Instead, it's a plus. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out that taking something out of the tax base does not necessarily mean that you are hurting the county economically. I really think that in the future for this county, that is where the county economics, that's where the prosperity of this county is dependent on. Is that remarkable? I mean, Silva is backed by a remarkable skyline. Those mountains are over a mile high. It's one of the most beautiful, and what is also is remarkable about it is that they're largely on the hill. So when I drive in, yesterday, I've been having a lot of rain here the last few days, but when I drove in yesterday into Silva, coming out from Culloway Way, those mountains with the clouds on them and moving up, they were spectacular. There are very few towns like that in these mountains that have that kind of backdrop. And you have Panther Town Valley on one side, let's have a Pinnacle Park and a balsam, a balsam reserve or a balsam set aside or a balsam recreation area, plot balsam, I think, on the other part of the county. I think we'd be wise to do that. I encourage you to vote for the application and to provide the monies for the county to provide their part of the monies for buying the land. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Burke.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Staff. My name is Eric Myers. I'm a resident of Jackson County. I had the privilege of participating in the first class of the Jackson County Citizens Academy last year, and the goal of that program was to increase citizen involvement and knowledge in the county's activities, boards, committees, et cetera, and I'm here to try to do that. And you'll see that I've been given some knowledge of people from Manager Adams on down, so you'll hear their names shortly this afternoon. I'm in favor of well-planned out conservation programs where there's a coherent ecological plan, an acquisition plan, willing and funded management entity, recreation access component, and local government support. If this project does meet those kind of goals, which I think it should, the county does it mostly with other people's money. I think you're being asked for about 12 and 1/2 percent of the project funding, if I did the math right with this. The other formal information I've seen regarding this project are the meeting materials, which is basically a memo and a map. It does provide and verify some of the elements of the conservation plan that I mentioned above, so I think this is a good coherent project. I would hope that the county will be willing to support the project conceptually as well as financially. So based on the timing laid out in the memo, I too would like to see the county support the project conceptually and conditionally in writing to allow the funding effort to move forward. I also think that the county should use their staff expertise to look at project details and report back to the board. I would ask if Mike Poston could look at the project to see if it's consistent with the conservation element of the comprehensive plan. I would hope that Nick Breedlove, Rich Price, and Rusti Ellis could look at the recreation economics for the county. And I'd like Tony Elders to look at how the various development ordinances would actually affect the development potential of this piece of land. I saw a lot of contour lines on it, so it looked pretty steep to me. And also, that would affect the appraisal of this property as well. I noticed that in the memo, the America's Home Place acquired this property in a huge run-up in value back in the early 2000s. It looked like they got it in 2004, so I'm sure they, like many other developers, paid a pretty good price for this, which I notice, in a capitalistic system, I guess that's a rule thing to do, seeing what happens to a lot of other companies. But I did want to, you know, suggest or ask, and she has had your very knowledgeable staff take a look at some of these issues. That's all I can offer. Thanks.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners and Chairman, for giving me this opportunity. My name is Dan Burrell, a resident of over 30 years in this wonderful county. Well, I don't have a whole lot of things to add, because most everything has been said that is appropriate, and I really do want to thank the people who have already spoken, because I think they do reflect the feelings of most of the people in the county. I was, you know, as I was driving down, as Burke had mentioned, the mountains are shrouded in the vapor of all the paint. We've forgotten, and that's great, because they look beautiful. The plot balsams are imposing. They've been here for probably over 200 million years, one of the oldest mountain ranges in the world, which is kind of interesting. And all I can say is, I think June 1st is your due date for this letter. That's a R.O. That's right, tomorrow. So I would argue that you should be legendary in your minds and legendary in this time and send that letter of intent through. All I can say is that I'm sure the people of this county will thank you for doing that, and I would say that I will thank you for doing that. So please consider to move forward and take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Thank you for giving me this chance to speak. My name is Cynthia Gallinger and I'm a longtime resident of Jackson County. I raised my family here and like many local families, we enjoy biking, hiking, and playing in the streams in our mountain forests. Some of these areas have become developments and are no longer available for the use of Jackson County residents. But Pinnacle Park has always been a treasure for the people who live in Silva. First, it was a source of water for our homes, then a place to enjoy the great outdoors. Like Central Park in New York City, it could be parceled out to provide lots of tax revenue, but its citizens there would rather go without the extra cash than trade it like the citizens here. When I was a Cub Scout leader at Slats Creek School, Pinnacle Park was the one place I could take the kids for hiking and activities that was not in a distant part of the county. Now that it is a nationally recognized recreational area, others are discovering its beauty. Whenever I go there now, many of the cars have out-of-state license plates. I understand the need for development. Our county needs the revenue. But it seems like there are plenty of other areas that could be developed that don't have the potential to bring in tourist dollars like this piece of property does. And when we can have it for a fraction of its value, when another entity is willing to foot most of the bill, it seems like a no-brainer.
I'm Andrew Ryson. Live up on Fisher Creek. Been here all my life. Well, I told you live there. I was born on Pine Creek, but moved down here at an early age. And the mountains we're talking about is home to me. We seem to forget a lot of times, you know, called plot balsams. The plot family, the plot bear hound, the plot mountain range. It's always been open to hunting, forever what you want to do, walk, you know, and, and it's come to the point though, I guess you need somebody to kind of look at you. But when I was young and first started hunting on this mountain range, on the backside of the mountain, there was one house on Thunderstroke Ridge. And that, that, well, I'm older than that. That's been quite a few years ago, really. But there are so many houses being built, you know, everywhere. And I thought, you know, once this was sold, you know, the first time I said, uh-oh, you know, that's gone, that's the end of that. But now it's come open again and this is a chance, I think, to preserve it. Now, I'm also speaking for some of my hunting buddies, old country boys. They live here and enjoy the mountains and stuff and I'm sure, I'm too old to keep running the mountains like I used to. But there's a lot of other people who still like to hunt on this mountain range. I would like to see it stay open to things like that, for its hiking and stuff. The Pinnacle Park is a super thing. I live just a ways down below it and there's millions of people goes there and enjoys it. But I would like to see that left open to whatever, but preserve it like it is. I've been on every ridge up there and under most ever tree. And it's, it's, it's really a rough piece of land on the back, you know, for as that goes. But it's beautiful and if any of y'all have never been to the very top of the mountain, you need to go. I've been all over the Blue Ridge Parkway from one end to the other, Smokies and everywhere. Standing on top of that mountain right there and looking is the prettiest place I've seen in these mountains. Now, I'm, that's, of course, you know, like I say, I'm a country boy, but you can see Cat Lucci, you know, everywhere the, all of the Smokies, all the way into Georgia, just, you know, anywhere direction. And it's really pretty. And I encourage you to go and look at that. And I would also like to see y'all preserve it, but I'd, I'd like to see it left to all the taxpayers and all the people to do their thing, walk, hunt. You won't be doing much fishing, I'll tell you that. But to, to enjoy that, but if we let it go, I'm afraid this will be the end of it. You know, we're not getting another chance. I, I'm, I'm really surprised we're getting this chance. I have hunted on it some, you know, and lately, but we had, we had permission that would let us, you know, go and, and whatever, but, but, you know, it's, it's a lovely piece of land and we need to preserve it. Because it's, in the long run, I know you're losing some tax base, but in the long run, the county is going to make money off of it. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Linda Sossman. I am the mayor of Silva, but I'm also a resident of Jackson County and I live in Silva. And I'm here today to speak for the reservation that's on the table right now. Those that have spoken before have eloquently stated the reason for supporting this conservation. I won't repeat everything that's been said. I just really want to ask the Commissioners that you support conserving the portion of the plot balsams that are in our county forever, for future generations, for grandchildren, visitors, everyone. A commitment from the county is always needed to start things moving forward to save this beautiful section of our county. The town has promised its support and the necessary funding. I'm asking that the Jackson County Commissioners do the same. And I will leave you with a quote. At the inception of the National Park Service in 1916, their mission was much like ours is today. And I will only state part of that because it's, was written in 1916, wordy, but they said to conserve the scenery, to provide for enjoyment of the same, to leave them unimpaired for the enjoyment of future generations. That's what we're trying to do today. Thank you.
I'm Paige Dowling. I'm the town manager in Silva. The Clean Water Management Grant is going to be awarded somewhere. I feel like it should be to us. Everything's contingent on the grant being awarded. And the town felt it was important to conserve because it was visible from Silva. I went to the property three weeks ago. There's a beautiful view of Silva, a very nice waterfall and rare species. I saw my first flying squirrel. But I feel like that all the concerns that can be worked out in a conservation easement. But at this time, a commitment from the county can help us move forward by making the application more attractive. Thank you.
I just want to say that we're building a new trail at Pinnacle Park. Our workdays are every first Saturday of the month, starting at nine o'clock. Anybody that wants to come and help us dig that trail out is most welcome. Do you provide salt and fish?
Drew Hooper. I'm kind of late getting here, but I read the stuff in the paper and that acreage up there is, that's pretty much money for it, but it's a deal really. And it's, if they, if it goes to a developer, they'll build it to houses and it'll re, it looks like, it looks like wine. It looks like wine. They'll go to that Block Creek. We don't want that. Don't want that. And they'll run it crazy. They'll run North Fork and, because they like to build roads in there between houses and they will put a bunch of them. And Fish Creek, Bus Creek, it's maybe all the way to Luton. And they run clear and pretty now in this region. So that's not all I can say.
I'm Gail Woody and live here in Jackson County. And I had the privilege of working for the North Carolina School Health Training Center doing some contract work. And the headquarters of that has been in Boone. And a few months ago, I was driving through Banner Elk and Blowing Rock and into Boone. And on the ridge of that mountain were all these high-rises, real built up. And as I drove home and drove to Jackson County, came over the ridge from Balsam, I thought, what a beautiful place. So thankful that we can live in a place where we have development, wise development, but we also preserve the beauty, the natural beauty of our mountains.
My name's Dan Schaefer. I'm sorry I didn't sign up earlier, but I did want to add one thing. Paige did say we've been out the mountain. It is steep. It's real steep. There's water in a couple of places up there. Those are good amount in one place. I did also talk to Stacy Cannon to see if this price was negotiable, if they want to move on. He said they'll build condos up there. But I really think it's a reasonable purchase and would be a good addition for you to top at that bridge if it's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Boris Jones. I didn't sign up because I had to go get an answer, but get her permission to let me Just one thing. We live, our property, Jones, Pinnacle Park. I live there. I look over that every day. I go, I see it every morning when I go get the paper. I see 30 to 40 cars a day coming in there. Most of them from out of town. It absolutely is a tourist attraction. We see, also see buses come in from the schools and from the colleges where they have studies that go up there, where they bring 30, 40 of the students in there. So it serves a great many things. What I really wanted to say was, I've had the privilege of being here for about 30 years now. We moved in from back on Rouge where they don't have any of these hills. We were privileged to be here when that was the Silver watershed, so I considered that my backyard. There are not many places left that God made that man has not messed up. We have a chance, as all of these folks have said, and I agree wholeheartedly, we have a chance to save this one for future generations. I thank you for your time.
That will conclude our public comment section. This time I'll recognize our county manager to provide us with additional information. I know the board had asked some questions concerning this issue, some follow-up information that we may want to provide. I think maybe even a copy of the possible draft letter to talk about what we are asked, have been asked to do and we'll go from there.
So the Places Board, first thing that came out of the work session was, put on paper the actual amount of funds available in CPR Fund, Conservation Preservation Recreation Fund. So I'd asked Finance Officer Ms. Fox to put that together, so that'll be the first thing So what, what Ms. Fox did, she put together the, now, when we were having this discussion, there were some unknowns out there. So what you have in front of you is the current balance in the CPR, the Conservation Preservation Recreation Fund, is $786,959.93. Currently, in the recommended budget, if the board chooses to adopt as recommend, or this recommendation, it's recommended to put an additional $500,000 into that fund July 1st, 2018. Also in that recommendation, if you recall, that we did have some capital improvements that were being requested to be done, to be expended out of this fund. This is for a recreation apartment. So not capital equipment, but capital improvement. And $283,700 was recommended to come out of this fund next year. So that total is $1,3259 is projected to be available in that fund. One thing to note is that $250,000 is set aside for the Savannah Park in this discussion. So...
So that's not included in that?
That's not included.
So you're including 0.25 million?
0.25 million, yes, sir. So the couple unknowns that I mentioned, that we were somewhat talking about, was that I do believe we'll get the, the final cost on Savannah Park next week. If you recall, Recreation Director Reston was there and he thought he may have some the total cost by today, but he will get the final cost, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's June 6th, that's what we're talking about. And so the only other conversation that I know that we're having was Commissioner Elders is, is want to make sure we had some funds available or enough funds available to take a serious look at the park in Whittier. And so that's the other unknown cost that's there. So again...
Put your quality.
No, I'm sorry.
Put your quality.
Quality, yes, sir. And so at this point, the $1 million is the known and the two unknowns is the final cost for Savannah Park and then the cost for Whittier Park.
Any other questions about the finance department? Could you speak to maybe the letter and the request? I know one of the things that we, we want to make sure, and I know comments especially from our sportsmen about preserving opportunities to have access, that's something that's very important to us.
So what I did was, Mr. Chairman, this is something you and I talked about, you guys put this together. I put together, since what's coming before the board is a requested action, I did put together a, a sample letter. And what I tried to do is take into consideration some of the things that I've heard, not everything, but through the last couple of weeks, we have been receiving questions, trying to go back and forth and answer these questions. But if the Places Board, I could, I could go to this letter and just go through the points of this letter. Please do. Now what I, this, this letter does refer back to Bill Holman's letter. I don't have copies of that for you. That's the letter that was presented to you at a press meeting. Actually, I believe the copy of that letter was given to you in your general campaign. So what I'll do, Mr. Chairman, is just read through this letter and just kind of give you my thinking here. I went back and looked at the Conservation Fund letter, the request letter from Bill Holman. And the request letter was for us to write this commitment letter to the, the Clean Water Management Trust Fund, specifically to Walter Clark. So that's the reason at the beginning you were referring to Walter Clark and Clean Water Management Trust Fund. And I'm just going to read it for a bit. Mr. Clark, Bill Holman, North Carolina State Director of Conservation Fund, sent a memorandum dated May 3rd, 2018, to both Jackson County and the town of Silva attached. And I would recommend that we send that along with this letter. The Conservation Fund has taken the lead in acquiring and conserving a 441.53 acre tract of land referred to as Black Rock Creek. The estimated cost of the tract is $2,162,450 and it is anticipated that the town of Silva will retain ownership of the property. The Conservation Fund has applied to the Clean Water Management Trust Fund for a grant of $1,500,000. I also put the project number. The Conservation Fund has requested that the town of Silva and Jackson County each contribute $250,000 to go towards the purchase of this property. The Conservation Fund anticipates that the remaining funds needed for this purchase will come from private sources. It is our understanding that the Clean Water Management Trust Fund requires the commitment of matching funds from the town of Silva and Jackson County by June 1st, 2018. The funds would need to be available for expenditure in fiscal year 2018, 19. The Jackson County Board of Commissioners, and again, this assuming if you voted for, you would be voted to give me permission to send this. And so what I would state is the Jackson County Board of Commissioners... And so what I would state is, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners voted on May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, at a special called meeting, to commit two hundred fifty thousand dollars towards this project with the following contingencies. And so far, everything at this point is really just arrived from that request letter from Mr. Holman. So, the contingencies would be as follows, and this would be something I ask for discussion amongst the board. The commitment is contingent upon the approval of the Clean Water Management Trust Fund grant application. The final purchase price must be determined to be fair market value. Jackson County is requesting that two independent appraisals be performed to estimate fair market value. My discussions with Bill, he believes that Clean Water Management Trust Funds will require two independent appraisals, and so that way, question one, we'll have another verifying the cost. Third is, the conservation easement placed on the property should allow for the most flexible use of the property in the future as it relates to passive recreational uses. This next sentence was taken directly out of a sample easement that was taken from the website of the Clean Water Management Trust Fund program. So this language is the most flexible language that is allowed by this granting source. So such passive recreational uses may include non-commercial hunting, non-commercial fishing, hiking, walking, non-motorized biking, scientific study, animal-plant observation, nature and environmental education, historic tours, photography, and any other purposes consistent with these accepted uses. The fourth one, again, I went back and forth on this one. This fourth one was put in here, this contingency, based upon, I've been receiving feedback in regards to potential future recreational uses, i.e. bike trails, walking trails, things of that nature, and future uses as it relates to hunting, okay? And so, at this point, I think what I would recommend, at minimum, we need to make sure the conservation easement allows for all of these uses. So that's the point of number three. The fourth point here is, it is understood that the Town of Silva and Jackson County will mutually agree on what uses listed above will be allowable in the future. This agreement will be accomplished outside of the easement. So the idea being there is, what I'm trying to recognize is, I've heard multiple uses. You've heard it here connected. And so, at the end of the day, if we're ever going to come to a conclusion of what's going to be used there, it's going to have to be, I'm thinking, up to be some mutual agreement, maybe between the town and county, especially if we're tying this to our funding. And so, that's the reason I put the contingency forward. And then finally, Jackson County extends its appreciation to the fund for considering a grant request. Please let us know if there's any other information needed at this time. So that, Mr. Chairman, would be how I would propose to write the letter if the board chooses to move forward.
Any questions about the content of the letter in our presentation?
Well, this is, you know, the two terms here you're dealing with, one preservation, one conservation. There's a difference between preservation and conservation. But preservation is preserve, preserve something really basically as it is, it never will allow deterioration or change from there. Conservation is the wise use of our resources. And this, from my understanding, what I, I hope this is a conservation project that can be used. And I don't want it one day that, if we did this, then it become a preserve, maybe we all, shouldn't say all, many people would like to see it be a conservation thing where it can be used and not be all of them, whatever. So I don't know how you, if in fact this were to happen, how you dictate it, continue to be conservation, suit those needs that you just listed.
Mr. Chairman. Well, in the process, Mr. Manager, to make sure I understand, is we would execute this letter saying this is what our intent is.
Correct.
And I think we would, at that point, the application goes forward. If it seeks approval, it is funded, and the grant is awarded, then at that point, that's where we would want to have a meeting with our Town of Silva and sit down and to come up with this memorandum of understanding for what the uses are going to be, and at that point, we can work that out. Would that be a fair statement? I think the town's shaking their head yes.
Not the only caveat, I would say, on that timing, if he chooses to move forward, then I would think those conversations would need to start occurring sooner than waiting for the grant. The timeline on the grant, my understanding from Mr. Holman, is that this, the application is in, so the confirmation or commitment of resources are due June first. The grant itself will not be actually awarded until September. And then I believe the intentions are, with the negotiation for the property owner, is to try to get this closed by the end of calendar year two thousand eighteen. So as far as the agreement goes, as far as when would this money actually leave Jackson County's hands? You know, I would hope that we would have the agreement in place by the September range, around that range, and then the actual closing of everything, when the money is going to be distributed, it would be more towards the end of the calendar year. So I would just say, we probably need to immediately start having these conversations so we don't make it a last minute discussion.
But it doesn't have to be done by tomorrow, that's the point I'm at.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got some. Thank you for all the comments, everybody. They're much appreciated. Everything stuck out, I mean, I go to Pinnacle Eleven up there. And I know one thing came up about my, I was quoting the paper a couple of weeks ago about just coming out of the tax base, and if you've read this week's paper, Quentin gave me the opportunity to expand on that to kind of explain my position a little bit, so I won't read you that. But going through this process, I've learned a lot about land trust easements. Actually found an article written by the Brookings Institute that is a left-of-center think tank in DC that talks about how these things, well, the title of it is "Abusive Tax Deductions for Charitable Donations of Conservation Lands Are Authorized." Subsequently talked to the author about, hey, what are the red flags we should be looking for as a county when we go into some of these deals? And he gave me some, some of them had been, this letter addresses the use, that was one of the things I was quoting in the Silver Hill this week, about arranging how we can have access to it. Some of the things he talked about were making sure these deals are transparent, particularly if they're going to use public funds. You, the taxpayer, should be aware of who the beneficiaries are of the tax breaks, who all is involved in the project, et cetera, et cetera. Because what happens on these deals is, we're getting asked to put public funds into this deal, and somebody's going to get a big tax break on it. Some corporation or really wealthy individual is going to get a big tax break. So that's just, that's a policy thing that we need to think about as a county, if that's something we want to do. And so, what my point is, I'm getting to, is I think we need a policy as a county, and I hope you all agree, for in the future, how we are going to address these issues. You know, we're talking about a policy earlier in our meeting about hiring people with, if one, they come on board with X number of services from a different county or whatever, all that. That makes all these processes much easier to have a process, have a policy written. It's a way for the county to score the projects ourselves and make sure it's something we want to pursue. Eric, you talked about plan, plan, plan. What's our plan with this, you know, that could be incorporated in that policy? All on the basis of being more transparent on these types of issues. So are we in agreement, we need a policy on this? What do you all think?
I think we've been transparent.
Though my question was, do we need to develop a policy for future projects like this?
I think so.
I think it's a case by case.
Futures now.
And that's something we can, we can talk about in the future. I mean, obviously, it doesn't have the impact of today.
Oh, right. We don't have what, we don't have policy in place, so some of the questions are heavy.
I don't like the big problem having a policy about that. What I think the problem is, when someone comes in here to talk to us about school issues, about safety, they shouldn't have talked, they shouldn't have to convince any of the five of us that that's important. When somebody comes in here to talk to us about these mountains, and about where we live, and the clear water, and all of that, we shouldn't have to be convinced. A whole group of people shouldn't have to walk in here and convince us to say these mountains. I don't see, I don't see that. I've got a spill on them, spill it's on, but bear with me. When you come through Cali Gap, that's the first thing you look at, some mountains right there. When you come up to Catamount Gap, first thing you look at, some mountains right there. When you go out that highway right there, the first thing you're looking at, some mountains. Randy, my brother's sitting back there, we can go all the way to the top of that mountain back there, find the pieces of old logging equipment still, my granddad used. Okay? I don't want to ever look at part and see lights all over the side of that mountain. Now, I just don't. I look at those mountains every day. When you come out of hospital up there, and you start that direction, you're looking straight into those mountains. You shouldn't have to convince us how important those mountains are. You lived on the side of the mountain. Now, used to, y'all don't maybe know, used to, the people that lived high on these mountains in Charles was the poor people.
Amen.
Because they couldn't afford the bottom land and all this stuff, they lived up the way outside of the mountains up there. Now, then they hit it.
That's right.
And that's where the people lived on the side of these mountains, because there's some darn poorer that couldn't live down where the land was more expensive. And Alvin York lived over in East Tennessee, and they lived on the side of the mountain. And he got in love with this girl, he figured she'd never marry him because he did have his money, and he did have his bottom land, see? So he's trying to work him out some bottom land. His grandma, his mama, old mama with that old body on her head, she said, "Alvin, have you ever noticed how the people that live down low, that live down in the bottom land, look down on the people that live up high?" It's kind of changed here down the mountain. We have people coming here and they be along high, so they look down on us on low.
That's right.
And we have to look up at them. And the reason I run the county legislature was for that one reason, that's the only reason. Because I love, I love these mountains, and I love what we've got here.
May I say one thing?
Really, you should, you should have spoken there.
I should have, but you know me, that's why I didn't sign up. Mr. Mal, you can take your Brookings Institute study and shut it.
Okay. Sit down.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just to add too, my fellow commissioner, yeah, I've been your voice all my life, and for two reasons, I've never left. I couldn't afford every two, and the extra that I didn't want to. I love these mountains.
Absolutely. I think drawing to the policy is something we can talk about at a work set. Commissioner D. said he thought it was a good idea.
Sure.
Come up with a policy to deal with these in the future?
I don't have a problem with that.
Commissioner Holman?
I think...
Be glad to hear that.
Oh, I don't have a problem.
Let me say a couple things here. Is, Boyce, you missed your call in the line, you should have there. But, convince us, I don't think it's a matter of convince, my thing is basically what Henry said and a lot of the others said, is, I have, I work in the gay community, I don't like. I mean, you start enclosing people out, putting people to the outside of them, and not letting people, maybe that was their heritage home grounds or whatever, to go through and whatever. I don't like. That's me, that's my personal opinion. I just, when you start catching things off and don't do it now. But, I will say that, I, first and foremost, that it ought to be preserved. There's no doubt about that. But when it's limited or presented in a fact or in a way that sounds like it's not open for uses, such as hiking, biking, hunting, whatever you want to do, whatever the recreational purpose of it is, then I'm not at that point for preserving. That's the reason for my questions prior to this, was, I want to make sure that if we preserve it, that if there was a beautiful bowl stream on it, that I'd go in there and fish if I wanted to, or whatever, especially if it was going to spend your money and my money to buy it. So, I will say that, I will disagree with you just a little bit, Mr. Chairman, on your transparency. I just do not think it's being transparent a hundred percent what it could or should have been from the beginning, because that's part of people. And plus, I will say that it ought to be preserved, there's no doubt about it. It needs to be preserved. Unlike Boyce, there's nothing worse than when you look out a lot of times at the place that you've seen all your life. A good example of it is my place in Eastlaff, right there that I bought, I'm halfway up the side of the mountain. When I bought it, I looked out over on that beautiful landscape mountain over by me, there wasn't a lot over there, there wasn't nothing over there. Well, now then, there's a development over there, and there's about fifty unction lots over there, if not, you have to look over there, and it looks like jar flies over there, if not, lit up with porch lots and everything. So, you know, I get that, and I understand where it's coming from. So, with these conditions that have been stated, and that's the only way that I'll even go forward with it, is, is we continue, like Don said, is do it now, let's don't wait. We seem to want to wait. Here we are on the thirteenth hour of something that could have been worked out a lot earlier with some more clear, concise transparency, and having to approve this. But there's no doubt that I'm going to vote to approve it, for certain.
I don't think you've been any problem with transparency.
I don't think so, either.
I don't think at all.
I'd like to hear what your decision would be.
When you, when you, when any of us gets out and tells people how things is going to be when this happens, and we really don't know what we're talking about, then we need, we shouldn't do it, if anybody's done that. But, the first thing I looked at and found out the next day was, what can we do up there? Because I didn't know. But there was people that did know, and I asked more than one, and it wasn't, it was people that knew this every day. So, we weren't hiding anything, just, we're just, we were ignorant of facts. And turn on, on fault, turn on fault, we're ignorant, have to get out and find that better than tell people otherwise.
Well, and let me just sort of paint a timeline here of what's happened, because I don't want there to be a misunderstanding or people to think that there's not been transparency, because there has been. This project has spanned several years. This is not just all of a sudden come up at the last minute. This was a project that started out as a plan where the tribe was looking at possibly acquiring this land. There was a change in tribal politics, and things sort of fell through there, and it went on the back shelf for a long time. And the Conservation Fund began to search for other opportunities, another way to approach it, and so sometime during the year last year, they started the process of trying to negotiate with the town to see if there was an interest in the town pursuing the grant, and being the agency that would apply and take ownership of the property. So, it's the town's project, it's not our project. And so those conversations took place. When I was presented the request, could it be done? I handed it to the manager and said, "This is something we can't talk about in a public meeting yet, because it's not our project. It's not eligible for a closed session, because it's not our project." I asked him to meet with each individual commissioner privately and lay out on the table what the proposal was, and to give you a chance to ask questions and to research, and that spanned several months, to where it brought us to the point where the town publicly came out, announced the project, and voted on it. Then that allowed us to put it on our agenda and to vote on it. So, we have been fully transparent, and everyone has known about this for months and had opportunity to ask questions and research. I know Boyce had some questions, he came up, and me and him looked at some maps of it to make sure we knew where the property was, and that's the process. to make sure we knew where the property was, and that's the process. There's not been hidden information, because transparency means you're hiding stuff from people. And that's not what's happened here. Everybody's had full information. I made sure Don has communicated with Bill Holman, he's asked, answered questions, he has provided a full access to all the information that all of us have had. So that's transparent.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we keep talking longer, this will be midnight, the date will pass.
You make a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we grant our county manager to get this letter.
I'll say. All right, any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Dees?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Aldis?
Yes.
Mr. Lucker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mal?
Yes.
Chairman, my...
Yes, motion carries, Bob.